Isn't it strange that kings and queens and clowns that caper and sawdust rings? And common people like you and like me are builders for eternity. For each of us is given a bag of tools, a shapeless mask, and a book of rules. It is therefore for each of us to decide whether we become a stumbling block or a stepping stone. Now, isn't that strange? Lord, as we gather today to make decisions for this community, may this commission use only your best skills and judgment, keeping yourselves impartial and neutral as you consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before you, and always acting in accordance with what is best for our community and your fellow citizens. May your efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. May you seek to serve with respect for all. May your personal faiths give you strength to act honestly and well in all matters before you. And as people come before you, may they feel welcome that they belong to you and that you are the great custodians of their lives. We know that as we gather here today, the decisions that you will make will have a lasting effect on the people who pay taxes in this community and those who's not willing or able to pay taxes. We ask your blessings, we ask the blessings of the Lord upon you as a commission and all the employees of Pinellas County Government and its volunteers. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all of the proclamations today are very important, but this first one, I'm incredibly proud to read this one. But first, I'd like to ask all of our employees that are here to receive the Employee Appreciation Week proclamation and come up here, and then I'll have you introduce yourselves. So to set the stage, I just want to say that our motto is to be the model for public service. We set the service for public service in America, and our employees indeed do that every single day. So we are incredibly grateful for them. They work hard to serve each and every one of you, and we are very, very proud that they are our employees. So I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm Hazel Lane, and I work with Human Services as a case manager.
I'm Angela Green, and I work with Human Services as a senior office specialist.
Casey Morris with Traffic Engineering.
I am Bruno Rivera. I am a video specialist with Marketing and Communications.
I'm Kara Craftrey, and I'm a care assistant with Animal Services.
Donald Trump. Billy Washington, Pinellas County Utilities Chief Plant Operator.
And I'm usually the comedian. I'm Jonathan Skinner. I'm with Pinellas County Parks and Conservation Resources. I'm the volunteer program manager for our department.
Lori Collins with Regional 911 Center.
I'm Michael Schoderbach, Principal Planner with the Planning Department.
So the week of May the 5th through May 11th, 2019, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. Pinellas County employees, by working together, deliver first-class services to nearly a million residents and more than 5 million visitors annually. Our Pinellas County employees serve as active participants in the county's effort to develop innovative methods of providing services in new and cost-effective ways. Our employees also reach out to the community by volunteering their time and talents. Pinellas County employees are working hard to be the standard for public service in America, so I got the logo line right this time. And we encourage all of our Pinellas County citizens to join us in recognizing our employees who work throughout the county, providing dedicated service and maintaining a standard of excellence of which we can be proud. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019 be recognized as Employee Appreciation Week. So I'd like to take this moment to again thank all of our employees and show a short video of them doing things in our county.
According to the latest Citizen Values Survey, 97% of people who live in Pinellas County trust their local government. That doesn't happen automatically. Our county commissioners, county administrator, and staff are sincerely dedicated to serving the public. The first week of May is Public Service Recognition Week. So let's look at a few of the things Pinellas County employees do to make this a great place to live. Each day, our Parks and Conservation Resources staff manage over 20,000 acres of natural land and public areas.
It's just that joy you get from either seeing the kids playing on the playground and having a good time. You see a whole vast array of people that come out and really get to enjoy what they're doing.
Behind the scenes, county employees work every day to protect consumers, get rid of mosquitoes, and keep our pets safe through vaccinations and microchipping. And our emergency management staff work year-round to prepare the county for potential hazards like hurricanes. From the planning phase to project completion, our Public Works employees are improving our transportation corridors.
We know from our surveys that we put out to the residents that transportation is high on the list, and we do care, and we do want to make sure that our residents are happy.
By paving roads, improving traffic flow with our intelligent transportation system, replacing bike trail bridges, or repairing potholes and fixing sidewalks, county employees are improving transportation. And our Human Services Department is connecting citizens and our veterans with programs that help those in need. We're also making affordable housing a priority and providing healthcare access for the homeless.
You show up each and every day because you really want to give back to your community.
So when you're driving a newly paved road, riding your bike on the Pinellas Trail, applying for a building permit, drinking clean water, or enjoying beaches and parks like Fort De Soto, remember, public servants, your local government employees, help make it happen. In Pinellas County, we're doing things every day to serve the public.
And that truly is just a small snippet of what everybody does for you each and every day. So thank you again, and we'll get a photo of us all. And we had started having a county picnic a few years ago to celebrate our employees, and so tomorrow we'll be out at Sand Key, enjoying each other's company and celebrating the public service that our employees do.
We're restrained.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Next, we have Arbor Day.
Rhodes, John Martinotti, and Matt Hill, and staff from the Stormwater and Vegetation Division of Public Works, Carol Purshell, Mike Riley, Jackie Hartley, Lori Messenger, Jerry Azari, and the staff from Development Review Services. All come on up here. And again, I will ask that you all introduce yourselves, and we'll start with you.
Mike Riley. Pinellas County Development Review Services.
Jerry Azari, 32 years.
Jackie Hartley, DRS.
Lori Messenger, DRS.
Carol Purshell, Environmental Program Manager, DRS.
Jamie.
John Martinotti, Urban Forestry.
I'm Dave Henrichs, Landscape Services.
Michael DePapa, Urban Forestry and Landscape Services.
Matthew Hill, Urban Forestry and Landscape Services.
Carolyn Cheatham Rhodes, Urban Forestry and Landscape Services.
Thank you and welcome. We're glad that you're here. The proclamation, this gives a nice background about Arbor Day. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. In 2019, it's the 147th anniversary of the holiday. Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air and water, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, provide fruit and nuts, and beautify our community. Wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy, artistic beauty, and spiritual renewal. So now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that April 26, 2019 be recognized as Arbor Day in Pinellas County, Florida, and urge all the citizens to join me in supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our county's urban forestry program. Further, please urge all of your fellow citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. And I think that is so true. Anybody, if you've ever had the opportunity to go to many of our special parks, we have some wonderful trees in those parks. So I urge you to take the time to do that and savor that beauty of sitting underneath a beautiful oak tree or any other type of tree that's present. Thank you. Does anybody wish to comment or say anything?
That means I'm gonna have to read something.
You're cheap sheet as well. I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to address the board today. My name is Carolyn Cheatham Rhodes. I'm the urban forester for Urban Forestry and Landscape Services. And our staff at Urban Forestry and Landscape Services is composed of really highly skilled folks who are tree care and landscape maintenance professionals. And beyond their titles, they're certified arborists, they're urban forest municipal specialists, qualified tree risk assessors, they're ecologists, they're foresters, geographers, and managers of people. If I'd like to introduce those folks, well, I guess you guys had heard all of them. Matt, and Michael, and Dave, and John, and Jamie are folks from DRS, excuse me, the folks from Urban Forestry. And we have folks from DRS as well who help us with trees in our private areas. Urban Forestry and Landscape Services is responsible for managing our public trees. So they manage our public trees for safety and environmental resources throughout unincorporated Pinellas County. And basically, we cover an area that's about the equivalent of 4,000 football fields. That's what we manage right-ofaways for mowing and tree maintenance. And then we also do basically an area along roadways that is from here to Paris and back. That's how long the distance of the roadways all throughout unincorporated Pinellas County, all those public trees, all of those rights-of-ways that we have to mow there as well. So we would like to thank the board today as well for taking the time to recognize that the urban tree canopy and that the urban forests are vital parts of our green infrastructure in unincorporated Pinellas County and all of Pinellas County, and that they have an impact on both the environmental resilience and the well-being and health of our citizens. So in recognition of National Arbor Day, we'd like to present to you all, all of the commissioners, with your very own tree. We have got longleaf pines for our wonderful land of pines, Pinellas County, and for you to plant for yourself. And then we have a few gift items in there as well that will remind you to plant trees.
Thank you. And I will tell you that I already have a little pine sapling growing, so I will put this nearby and grow another one. So can't wait. Actually, I haven't killed it yet. I'm really proud of myself.
One, two, three, trees.
One, two, three, trees. One, two, three. One, two, three.
So no instructions, just plan and water? All right.
Next is Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. And accepting the proclamation is an old friend of mine, Ann Rogers, and she is the NAMI Board President, and Denise Whitfield is the Executive Director. If you could come up, that'd be great.
Karen, they brought a lot of people. Can they bring them all up?
As a community, we continue to learn more and more every day about the serious and widespread impacts of mental illness. Today, I want to recognize the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, of Pinellas County as we head into the month of May, the National Mental Health Awareness Month. Oh my goodness, this is so wonderful. I didn't know we had a whole cheering crowd here. Yay. I apologize that I didn't invite you up, and I'm just so glad you're here. Even a service dog. How perfect is that? So for over 30 years, NAMI Pinellas and their dedicated volunteers have advocated for access to services, treatment, support, and research, and is steadfast in their commitment to raising awareness and building a community of hope for all of those in need. On behalf of the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners, we thank you for the service that you provide to our communities. With increased knowledge, there comes a responsibility to act. Our county is working hard every day to end the stigma of mental illness and to have the resources for treatment available so the suffering will end. Part of the proclamation is that I think just from information sake that I'd like to share is, one in five adults experience mental health problems in any given year, and such problems can contribute to the onset of mental illness. One in 25 adults live with serious mental illnesses such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia. Approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, and three-quarters begins by the age of 24. And there's more information, but I think the message is to leave as well as early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental illness and recovery. So thank you all for being here today, and... Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Whitfield. I am the Executive Director for NAMI Pinellas, and NAMI does stand for the National Alliance on Mental Illness. We are very honored to be presented with the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation. Mental health plays a pivotal role in an individual's day-to-day life. One out of five individuals will be diagnosed with a mental health condition. And for many, this can be devastating, not only for themselves but also for their families. That is why it is important to continue the fight for better access to mental health care. I'm very grateful to be standing here among our community mental health partners who share in the goal to educate, serve, and mobilize our community to ensure that every person who needs mental health care can have access to the services and support systems they need to lead a full and satisfying life. We do this by providing resources to help people learn about mental health when it's a difficult topic to talk about because of cultural beliefs or practices. We reach out to teens and young adults. Mental health conditions start early. We want to end the stigma, fear, and lack of awareness, and let young adults know it's okay to talk about your mental health. The people in this room today continue to serve the mental health population daily. We partner with one another to make certain all of our services and resources are shared to better the lives of people affected by mental illness, including training our law enforcement agencies on how to respond to a mental health emergency. I am very grateful to Commissioner Kathleen Peters for taking the strong stance to promote effective mental health policies and for recognizing not only NAMI Pinellas for all of our work in the community, but also recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Together, we can all work to increase our awareness and be stigma-free for the individuals needing mental health care, extending our services to the public sector, public corporations, civic organizations, faith organizations, and let's not forget about our professional sports teams that are located right here in our beautiful county. We can do this by continuing our efforts by providing support, education, and advocacy. So again, we want to thank everybody and also for the county commissioners for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you so much.
As much as you can, and squeeze in as much as you can.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Nice to see you all. There you go.
Okay. 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 So we think we're quite effective at returning the investment that Pinellas County has in terms of leveraging funds for projects that will support the bay's restoration. We do this with only six staff members at this time. So the many projects that we are involved with, you know, some of the important considerations due to climate change and how that might impact the ecology of the bay, we're starting to study how the bay's recovery, particularly the seagrass resources in Tampa Bay, have potentially buffered ocean acidification processes and that has ramifications for a lot of the burgeoning shellfish industries that are starting to form at the lower part of Tampa Bay. We also are focused on understanding the habitat use of harbium habitats. We have a project looking at harbium habitats in Pinellas County Aquatic Reserves and this is primarily important over this past year because we think that those areas in the lower part of the bay might be serving as refuges for important commercial recreational species like gag and snapper, gag groupers and snappers, particularly during the severe red tide events that we saw this past year. So we're pursuing research to understand how those habitats play the role in the total ecosystem viability of our estuary. And then there's various other projects you see that we're involved with. Just signed a grand agreement this morning with the state DEP to pursue a public outreach and education program focused on educating homeowners on the importance of repairing and maintaining their private lateral systems to further prevent the contributions to sanitary sewer overflows in the future. And probably one of the things that we're best known for is being an honest broker and facilitator of regional issues that are affecting the bay. And we've done that through various groups. One of our most well-known is the Nitrogen Management Consortium and this involves a lot of municipal governance as well as private industries and utilities that have a nitrogen load discharge responsibility to Tampa Bay. We annually assess water quality conditions to see if they're supportive of continued seagrass recovery and this group is directly responsible if those water quality criteria are not met. There's ramifications for their permits and it's been very important to them to show progress and they've implemented a vast amount of projects to further reduce the nutrient load burden to Tampa Bay since the early 1990s and that has had significant results. The graph in the middle is indicating water quality conditions from the 1970s to the current period and you see over time, we've gotten better indicated here by green. We still have some problem areas in the bay that we continue to work on with different projects and we continue to leverage resources towards ways to address those issues. But over the past, from 2014 to 2018, we've been maintaining seagrass acreage in extent at levels above our recovery goal that we set back in the early 1990s and that being above 38,000 acres. So let's continue.
Question for you. They're doing some work on the causeway right now to open up. Could you talk about that and how it relates to the upper Tampa Bay condition?
Yeah. We actually pursued a project using a model to understand how improving circulation could reduce algal abundance in Old Tampa Bay. The Department of Transportation took some of those results and applied that in a breach of the Courtney Campbell Causeway on the eastern portion of that expanse. We've been encouraging to pursue additional opportunities, particularly they're now investigating a breach on the western side of the bay adjacent to the old Clearwater Christian College. We've also encouraged them to look at ways to breach the Howard Franklin Bridge Causeway during reconstruction of the northbound expanse that they're planning over the next couple of years. So this will allow better tidal flow and circulation in that part of the bay and we see problem issues in terms of algal abundance, particularly along the bayside bridge. Each year, a particular algal species blooms there called pyrodinium. We're looking at ways to remediate that through improvements in physical water circulation or through bio remediation to improve oyster or shellfish restoration activities in that part of the bay. So those are some of the projects we're focused on to move forward on improving water qualities in areas that need a little bit more TLC.
Thank you.
Other ways that we help promote some of these projects is through what we call our Tampa Bay Environmental Restoration Fund. This was actually an evolution of the Pinellas County Environmental Fund back in the mid-1990s. We've taken this over and through a co-management partnership with the national nonprofit Restore America's Estuaries. We're able to leverage both public and private donations towards this grant fund to further invest in restoration and water quality improvement projects. This was developed from the Pinellas County Environmental Fund back in 2013 and since that time, we've leveraged about $5.9 million in both public and private contributions for additional restoration activities in the Tampa Bay watershed. Listed on the bottom, there's a couple of projects that are ongoing now as they relate to improving water quality and better understanding the sources and the amount of microplastics in Tampa Bay. This funding source allows for additional research to university groups in our watershed as well as to local governments to pursue additional restoration activities. One thing I did want to mention, Pinellas County is a contributor to the T-Birth Tampa Bay Environmental Restoration Fund, but you're funding at a level that's below the inter-local agreement amount that would give you a benefit in terms of our annual contributions towards our inter-local agreement. So if you would fund that at the $75,000 level, you'd actually receive a benefit towards the inter-local agreement contributions that you currently contribute each year to our program. So I just wanted to mention that as an added benefit to the county to consider. Some of the ways we get involved with the community is through sales of our tarpon tag. If you've seen the green license plate with the tarpon on them, the funds from those sales go to another community-based grant program that we call our Bay Mini Grant Program. And since about 2000, we've been able to direct about $1.8 million back to the community. These are homeowner groups, community associations, school groups that are working on small micro grant projects that are focused on restoring Tampa Bay or better educating citizens about the importance of protecting Tampa Bay. So it's a very popular program. We got about 37 applications back in September 2018 and this year, we're able to fund 19, including some education and outreach at the Florida Aquarium related to red tide events and how the community could reduce their vulnerability to these events in the future. I encourage you to follow those links and you can see the variety of different projects and school groups we were able to fund through the sales of the Tampa Bay Estuary License Plate. And if you don't have one, I encourage you all to get a tarpon tag next time you renew your license plate. Lastly, I just want to touch on our volunteer events that we conduct during the cooler months, usually during fall and spring months each year. Our Give a Day for the Bay volunteer events are wrapping up in May, but we have one last event in Safety Harbor. This is actually adjacent to a living shoreline demonstration project that they pursued last year. They're actually going to do some additional plannings using community volunteers to restore some of the habitats in and around the Safety Harbor shoreline. It's adjacent to their municipal docks. That event's May 11th and if you wanted to catch up on all the other events that might be coming up this fall, I'd encourage you to follow us either through our website or our other social media channels. But I really do appreciate Pinellas County's support, continued support of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program and all the staff involvement that you allow your folks to participate on through our various working groups, the Goals, our Management, and Policy Board. If you did have any questions or concerns about environmental issues, I'd be happy to address those and follow up to you or as you might feel necessary during the questions.
Well, thank you for the tremendous progress that you and your team have done along with your Board of Directors and we're very pleased that Commissioner Justice will be the incoming Chairman for the next two years and Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I wanted to recognize our staff, Jake Stowers, who had a heavy hand in the early development of the estuary program, and Kelly Levy and Andy Squires, who now are our staff leads and do an incredible job connecting us with the program and everything going on. And Mr. Sherwood does a wonderful job leading this small but mighty force over there. And I think there's a couple of points to walk away with is, one, most people don't know about the estuary program. We're working on that, but I think it's the best probably unknown example of regional cooperation in Tampa Bay with all the counties and all the cities working together to move forward. And to give you an idea, we've talked about the seagrass growth and that is the element of success, but the estuary program here in Tampa Bay is the only one in America that is improving the quality of the estuary water at the same time of having population growth. And so I think that's a tremendous statistic and thing to walk away with and if nothing else, remembering today, that's something to take home. So thank you for being here, Ed.
Thank you.
That's incredible. Thank you for your very hard work and we're very appreciative.
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Pure Pinellas by Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, when you asked me to start putting together some different presentations for Pure Pinellas, we tried to come up with some things that were uniquely Pinellas as a whole, but really those of us that are here know that Pinellas County is made up of 24 cities and multiple communities and each of those communities has traditions and history and a background that's unique to their own. And so today, we have one of those with us and I'd like to welcome from the Dunedin Pipe Band, Mr. Ian Donaldson, and you do have earplugs should you desire, but we'd like to welcome Mr. Donaldson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Sherwood. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Again, my name is Ian Donaldson. I'm the piping director for the city of Dunedin. And you ask, why does Dunedin have a piping director? Well, Dunedin's a very Scottish community. It was founded back in the 1800s by two gentlemen. One was Douglas and the other was Somerville. They decided to name the community Dunedin after the city of Edinburgh. Dunedin is Scots Gaelic for Edinburgh, which is the capital of Scotland. So it has a very rich culture, Scottish arts culture, Dunedin. We have a thriving arts program as far as teaching the bagpipes, which I do. We have Scottish country dancing, we have Highland Scottish dancing, and we have Highland Scottish Highland drumming. We have over 300 participants in our program. I teach in the Dunedin Middle School. I also teach in the Dunedin High School and we have an adult education program at the community center in Dunedin. We have six pipe bands in Dunedin. So we have one in the middle school where they start to learn the bagpipes and the drums and Highland dancing. We have another one in the high school and by the way, they all get credit for their participation as far as school credit and music for learning the bagpipe. We also have the adult education at the community center. We have various skill levels of piping and drumming within the bands and our top-grade pipe band had a very successful year in 2018. They were awarded American Champions in Virginia in 2018. They were awarded North American Champions in Maxville, Ontario, Canada, near Ottawa. And the Triple Crown was the world championship in 2018 in Glasgow, Scotland.
Oh, my.
Now, just a little bit about operating the bagpipe. It looks kind of easy, I'm sure, as I'm playing this. It takes one PSI to operate this instrument. There's four reasons. There's one in each one of these cylinders and there's one in here which creates the melody. It's one PSI. So I acquainted to anybody that has, can walk in a treadmill at about four miles an hour and then juggle three oranges simultaneously and then I want you to recite the Giddesburg Address from memory. So that's what it's like to learn the bagpipe, okay? So very challenging for the young students in the middle school and I thank the parents for persevering in their development at home of the bagpipe. But I thoroughly enjoy the job and I'm very proud to be a piping director in the Dunedin and represent the community of Pinellas County in Scotland.
So, Madam Chair... What a wonderful presentation. You said it was going to be extra special this month and it certainly is and...
I won't put any quick questions if you're curious about anything.
We appreciate the history too and all that you're doing to keep everything alive, the Scottish culture in Dunedin. I was actually at the Scottish Games recently.
Yes, yeah, that's our duty as well is to operate and organize the Highland Games.
Highland Games, yes.
I have a question. So Ian, I couldn't be more pleased that you came today. I think it's just fascinating to learn about the culture of the bagpipes and the Scottish legends and I really want to know why you didn't wear your kilt.
I wouldn't usually wear my kilt, but I'm in between classes, so it's just easy for me to kind of get back to my class situation and we have a Highland Games meeting tonight, so.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Very impressive. Thank you. Ian, what a... Commissioner Eggers wanted to...
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. It's great. Thank you, Charlie, taking care of North County, North County culture and countywide culture. Really appreciate what you do. He's really a humble guy. I mean, he is one of the premier instructors. I don't know about the world because I don't know about that, but I know in this country, he is a leader and he got this... The grade levels are really important. I think this was the last couple of years was the first time we had risen to a grade level two.
Yeah, well, we're now grade one, which is equivalent to maybe major league baseball compared to minor league baseball. Yes, I am a humble guy. Dunedin is really the focal point for the entire world for teaching bagpipes and pipe bands, it really is. It has worldwide attention. It's brought that kind of attention to a small little city in Florida.
That's incredible. So thank you... So, thank you for that. Your comment about the parents having resilience with their kids' learning, oh my gosh, one of them lived behind me.
Well, thank you today.
For two years, on Sunday morning, he practiced his bagpipe, and it was loud. But they're really wonderful to hear out on the open field, the open football fields and all that. When you get more than one inside, these things do come in handy, but it was beautiful today, so thank you so much for being here.
It's a wonderful community, and they really persevere, and they really enjoy all the kids' learning, so.
Well, thanks for leading our community.
So, do your students continue to play once they leave you?
Yes, yes. I would say a majority of the pipers in the music program continue playing their bagpipes through their adult career. Maybe not so much with the other instruments, but they have an opportunity to do so within the realm of their own city. They do go away to college, obviously, but we still have communication with them. They can still play with their city band, even though they're at somewhere else in the state of Florida or somewhere else. We have a member who's in Chicago going to university, so.
That's wonderful.
Sandy Keith in our community really kind of got this thing going strongly a few years back, and he passed away a few years back, and the entire Scottish group, you and everything, has just elevated this to another level, and I just couldn't be more proud of you and what you've done for the community. So, thank you again, and I appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Justice?
Just wanted to thank you again for being here. We really appreciate your time, and the mayor hit all the points.
Maybe I'll have you back one time. I'll have one license for you.
And wear the kilt.
Thank you. I don't know how you're going to outdo yourself next time on that one. Okay, our presentations are over, and now we are in the Cassin Agenda. They are items 6 through 26. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I just have a comment on 10 through 13.
13, okay.
10 through 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to go ahead and make your comment?
I do. Those are CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency Annual Reports, and I spoke with Barry a little bit about this. I think the presentation from Safety Harbor certainly spoke to what I would expect to see in these updates. It had all the financial information. It had 10-plus years of historical data that shows the county contributions versus the city, had progress reports, and the others didn't have that depth. In fact, there wasn't fiscal information in a couple of them. And so I think when we get these annual reports, they should tend towards a Safety Harbor model of giving a full picture of what that CRA was designed for, all the financial contributions, the budget. I just really think Safety Harbor knocked it out of the park on that, and I would hope we would encourage the cities to lean towards that rather than just a summary of projects.
Well, maybe what we can do is have some kind of template that they could follow, like we have the following questions or parameters that we'd like you to address, but that's a great observation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I totally agree with Commissioner Welch with one added thought, is that I think it would be a really good opportunity to bring us all up to date with all of our CRAs and where we are with them, especially as it relates to the ones that have been in existence for quite some time. You know, I know we have that period of time where they come back and they report to us, but it'd be nice to know in the meantime that there's actually movement going on with the fact that they have one.
We can prepare that.
I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Well, I think this is good feedback. I think all of the groups, at least speaking for Dunedin, I know they have all this information that you're asking for, and they didn't get it in here, so I think that the detail is really informative, and I think that would be a real easy fix, and I think probably most of the cities that have the CRAs do have this information, so it wouldn't be that difficult to get them to upgrade the financial picture, so, yeah, it's good stuff, I think. They're doing good work, and I think an update would be great at some point.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Move approval of the rest, Madam Chair?
How about all of them?
Of all of it, right?
Yeah.
The entire, okay. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch, and I need to open up my voting card. Six to nothing. All right, we'll move on to agenda item 27 then.
Item number 27 is a change order to a contract with Wall Bridge. This is out at the St. Petersburg Clearwater International Airport. This is additional work required for fire spray, roof trust, and upgrades to electrical boxes to meet current building codes. So, it increases the contract by $345,000.
Question?
Approval?
Second.
Question, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Welch, and second by Commissioner Long, and Commissioner Eggers had a question.
Yeah, is this new expanded scope barrier, or was this just work that was found along the way that needed to be added?
It was work that was added after the contract was issued. This is found as part of the construction.
Not anticipated ahead of time.
Not anticipated, but it's still within the project budget.
The 5% increase is a pretty big, pretty big bump. Okay, thank you.
Voting cards are up. Passes unanimously. Okay, agenda item 28.
Item number 28 is a resolution adopting the Linking Allowment Action Plan. This, again, was previously presented to the commissioners. It provides a blueprint and an outline for future improvements to be considered as part of the capital improvement plan, looking at our sidewalks, bicycle facilities, trails, streets, intersection improvements, and transit improvements, and wayfinding.
Move approval? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard.
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Welch.
In our briefing, Commissioner Justice mentioned the 54th Avenue potential realignment.
Correct.
Can we just speak to that process and what the public input opportunities will be?
So, as part of the plan, there are several different options for that section of the street, and so those will be discussed in a public setting and incorporating the, such as the comments from the fire department that were recently raised. So, no decision, obviously, has been made at this time. That'll be part of a public process. This is more of a long-range plan, and so each one of those will come back as part of each individual project for review and public input.
And actually, there was a nice presentation that was attached to this agenda item. Could we go ahead and go through the presentation, because I think it was very informative?
We do. We have staff that can go through that right now.
Hi, I'm Caroline Lampard, Principal Planner with the Planning Department. We're going to let our consultant, Jared Schneider from Kimberly-Horn, go ahead and give you the presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's really hard following somebody with a bagpipe after that. I'm going to have to try that in my next presentation. Really what we were trying to do with this plan is create an actionable plan that built on a lot of what the CRA is doing right now. So, we were trying to show projects that could be implemented soon. There's a lot that the county is already doing. Public Works has done a good job of implementing projects. Really what we wanted to do is look at the crash issue that's out there as well. As you look at some of these numbers, it's significant, almost 20 fatalities in the last five years, nearly 200 major injuries. Also, in the Lealman area, there's around 17% of the population doesn't own a vehicle, so we're looking at transportation options. So, we had a pretty robust public outreach activities. We had three CRA meetings and several public workshops, and really what we were trying to do here is keep it pretty interactive, and we got a lot of great feedback. We had other techniques as well for those that couldn't make the meeting. We had multiple surveys, and two of the things that really popped out were the lack of sidewalks. That came up over and over again. Only 30% of the streets have sidewalks. Lighting, that was another big issue that popped up as well. So, what we did is we used the feedback from the CRA and the public to come up with some of the prioritization criteria you see here on the right, and really put in a lot of the recommendations into several buckets, these street enhancements, safer crossings, transit, bike pedestrian improvements. And then we tried to create a phasing plan where we have what we call quick wins, projects that could be done over the next few years, and then short, mid, long-term projects. The intent was to keep, not have this etched in stone, but to keep it pretty flexible. So, now I'm going to dive into some of the project types. We have sidewalks. Again, I mentioned 30% of the streets in Lealman have sidewalks. So, this was a really big one. Again, kudos to the Public Works. There's a lot that's already been done. We kept joking internally, we had to continue to update this map, because there are things that are being implemented, including the connection of the Lealman Exchange. And really what we were trying to do is focus to some of the other areas of interest, like the schools and commercial areas. So, to highlight a few other items, crossings and intersections are key. You know, this isn't just for people walking and biking, it's for people driving as well. So, you know, I'll hit on the one in the middle there, 54th Avenue and 37th Street. We feel like there's some things that could be done to improve safety at that intersection. There already is a crossing at this point. But again, we felt these are some improvements that could be done quickly to really make the biggest impact. 62nd Avenue at Youth Park, providing connection there, and needing to coordinate with Pinellas Park, we felt was key as well. The connection to Duval Park Boulevard and connecting to Nury Park, that was another one we felt that could provide access from the neighborhoods to Nury Park. Moving to pedestrian trails, what we really had a lot of discussion on is creating a regional, but then also connected trail network as well as pedestrian network. So, there's a lot of discussion of connecting Nury Park with Pinellas Trail. Our favorite is the 43rd Street connection that we're showing there, the second one on the right. That's something that's already being utilized by, you know, by folks in the community, so let's formalize that with lighting and a sidewalk. Obviously, there needs to be more done from an engineering standpoint. 62nd Avenue, Public Works is looking at that right now, so again, kudos to them. And then the 28th Street connection, that's something the city of St. Petersburg further north is looking at, so again, connecting with our partners. Dive into a few other specifics. 46th Avenue, this came up time and time again, so really, we're talking about adding sidewalks and lighting, and this is actually in the capital improvements program right now, so that's being moved forward. 28th Street, this is a big one. Really looking at improving sidewalk gaps, bike facilities, and bus improvements. This top picture, it's actually a rendering, a really conceptual rendering of a woman on her bicycle. This woman is actually riding on this roadway without sidewalk facilities, so it's happening out there. All the plans that we do, I can't tell you how many people we see walking and biking. It's significant. 28th Street's also key with Joe's Creek Industrial Park, so we need to connect our freight there as well. 54th Avenue, this is a big one that was discussed. Really what we were doing is looking at concepts, high-level concepts. There really has not been a consensus on concepts at this point, and we need additional study through a preliminary engineering report. There were several points of consensus that we felt was really good through this process. Crossing improvements were mentioned time and time again. Intersection improvements, we looked at improving 49th Street at 54th Avenue, that came up, and everyone really liked that. Lighting and reduced speed was also one that was popped up. Again, the reason that this is important, four fatalities on this street in the last five years, significant, a large number of crashes involving motorists as well as those on motorcycles as well. So, again, that's why we're here today, next steps, and we're looking to adopt the plan, implement, continue to implement quick wins. Again, a lot has been done already, but we want to continue to build off of this framework, and then looking at a preliminary engineering report for 54th Avenue. Thank you very much for your time, and take any questions you have.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Great presentation, a lot of great work in there as well. Do you have a report that shows how many of the projects are funded versus unfunded?
At this point, in the report itself, we have the projects that are in the capital improvements program. There's several, like 46th Avenue that I mentioned, and then on top of that, we also have, the ones that are unfunded are the quick wins, the short-term and midterm.
So, the quick wins are not funded?
Not all of them are funded at this point. I believe some of them are, like the sidewalk, several sidewalks have been done and are funded.
Okay. Quick stats on 62nd Avenue North, that is from US 19 out to 58th, is that entire segment?
That's correct.
And is that broken out in the report as to what is funded and what the improvements will be? That's been an issue that we've talked about for some time.
Not at this point. I know Public Works is looking at that, trying to decide what design they go with, so until that's done, there'll be more of a refined or detailed funding at that point.
Okay, and so for the quick wins that aren't funded, what's the procedure for those to come back for funding, or is that something that's just under the administrator's authority?
That's right, yeah. It would have to come through the portfolio process.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, that was kind of the direction, I guess my comments or question was going to go specifically related to lighting, which, you know, typically is not done in the county, but because we have a defined CRA there with funding through the CRA, but also penny funding. Do you see, is there a mix coming between the two funding sources for capital projects?
We do envision some projects being funded through the CRA, particularly perhaps some sort of shared with the street lighting as part of the project. Perhaps the CRA could put in some money for the street lighting that we would normally do through an improvement district or something like that.
What is that TIF amount this year? Do we know what that is, that amount that is?
Looking back at Chris.
Okay. It's grown pretty quickly, and it's like three years, two?
This is Chris Moore with County Administrator's Office. The TIF budget this year is about 1.24.
And that's what, year three, or year?
Yes.
Wow. That's pretty good. That's healthy. That's a healthy start. I think that was one of the concerns we had, perhaps, was that we weren't going to get that funding through the CRA as quickly as that, so that's good news, so, thank you.
Any other further questions? Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation, and I believe we had a motion and a second already? Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it'll take a second for it to load.
Oh, I haven't voted yet? Oh, yes. Thank you.
Oh, we voted, too. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 29.
Item number 29 is a resolution, a reserve rental parcel for, it's an inherited property in the unincorporated area. You previously approved this for transferring ownership to Seminole. This will retain ownership as part of the county's real estate management surplus properties. That was a change necessary.
Move approval? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. Okay, unanimous approval. Moving on to agenda item 30, County Administrator miscellaneous.
For item number 30, we have three announcements. The first is, as was publicly reported, but I'm pleased to introduce to you officially this time Jill Silverbird. Where is Jill? As our new deputy county administrator. As many of you know, Jill is currently the deputy city manager for City of Clearwater, and she comes to us with a, you know, long career in city management, brings a lot of local knowledge, and I think she's going to be a big addition to our team, and we're excited to have her starting on May 30th.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome, and we're excited to have you join us, Jill.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
The second one is I would like to introduce your new director of Veterans Services as Jeffrey Memes, and Jeffrey is right here. Jeffrey's actually a current county employee since March of 2013, but he has a 30-year career in active-duty service with the Coast Guard, and he has a passion for serving our veterans and helping them, and so we welcome him into the top spot and all the great things to come.
You're welcome.
And then finally, Commissioners, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the SBE program. I know that's near and dear to your heart, something that the staff's been working very hard on. And we met with all of our top leadership, and especially over in our Public Works areas and our purchasing, and a lot of those that are going to be purchasing goods and services to really get hands around rolling this out. And Joe and our coordinator, Cynthia Johnson, have really taken a hold of this and are, you know, making this real out into our departments. It's going to, and we're looking at it all. We're looking at what it takes for businesses to access services, and not just being able to do it through our various programs, breaking down the way we do construction, to where we can break it up, to where packages are able to be serviced by local businesses. So they've met as a team, they've got, they're beginning to roll that out. They're expanding the number of businesses that are participating in the program, which is going to be key for us to get competitive pricing as we roll this out. So they're making great strides, and we look forward to good things to come. We'll have more to report as we have deliverables, and I can give you some numbers and things, but again, it's going very well. And I just wanted to provide just a quick update on that. That's all I have for today.
Very good, excellent. County Attorney, Agenda Item 31, miscellaneous?
I have nothing.
Okay. Any further county administrator reports?
I have nothing.
We're ready for citizens to be heard. Thank you. And please note that we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and we will start with Joanne Totti, who we haven't seen for a long time. How are you?
Oh, it's so nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Where have you been?
Off the streets. I had pneumonia, I had fun pneumonia, I got an allergy, whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm here because of the dog leash law, which I think stinks. I went into Home Depot the other day, and I was looking for keys. I was bending over, a dog came and attacked me. And I went, I drew blood, but it wasn't a bite, it was only a scratch. But the scratch infected. I had Agmentum, all that stuff. I went to a doctor in the emergency room. Seeing that I'm 85 years old and I have diabetes, it's very dangerous. So now you have dogs peeing in the corners. They're doing, I don't know how to say it, but I was in a nurse's house, so they shit in the carts. They have worms, pinworms, they get in their fingers, and you could get little pinworms. Home Depot does nothing for you. They are dog-oriented. I think Pinellas County should get together and do something about the dog leash law, because a long time ago, before you all were born, I was here for the cat leash law, where they wanted to put leashes around the cat, hang them in the trees, and Pinellas County did something. A woman in the store, the dog was a great big dog, and it was peeing, and the meantime, the guy who was there in the store, service guy, bent over to get it, and he went and said, "I gotta get a mop." He went to get the mop, when he got the mop, she bent over and said, "Oh, here's a Kleenex." He said, "Lady, the mop is going to do it." So she bent over to the dog and said, "Now, poopsie, you gotta tell Grandma when you gotta pee." So the guy said, "When the dog talks back, let me know." He got fired. I just think it's about time you all realize. I can't, you look good.
How you doing, Joanne? Thank you, man. You do too.
I think it's about time that you all got together and make Pinellas County proud that we don't have to put up with this crap. Dogs in the counter, dogs in the thing, they crap in the thing, babies, we put the babies in the thing. Another woman went ahead and got some food at Walmart, meat. She put it in the cart with whatever his name was, Peter or something, the dog. The dog chewed on it. So she bent over, took it, and put it back in the counter, got herself one that was wrapped. You have dogs pee in the corners. What's the name could tell you? He gets all the complaints. I have to go to an attorney. Don't laugh, Jewel. You should be on our side. I have to go to attorney tomorrow because I've been fighting this thing, because now Home Depot's got nothing to do with me. They told me to sit down where the blood was rushing, they took pictures, and they have not even called me. And it was Palm Sunday. I've been to the hospital, I've been all over, playing to my doctor, I have to watch it. And I think it's about time we all got together. I know there's service dogs, but you don't get a little service dog like this, and he's in the store with the other people, the husband and the wife and all this, and it's a service dog, which one is he protecting? Think, I'm sorry, I'm 85, I'm getting short of breath, you're going to ring the bell, but I'm getting half a mile on here, is the time? Two more minutes. So I pray to God. I pray to God before I die. I probably will have to put my house up for sale because I'll have to go to several quarters something about it. But they got their leashes wrapped around my cart, the cart goes over, I go on the ground, and nobody protects me, because I didn't break my head. It's about time. We got off, we got together, all get together, and force the law, force the law a little bit better. I don't have false teeth, but sometimes I force the law that we need to do something about this. This is God. And you can't go to Dunedin Beach, because when you go to the beach, you put your kids barefoot, and you get hookworms, tapeworms, all this, from crap. You know, this is about time. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I said, "Done."
All right.
Is that what you ringed, Jewel?
It didn't ring. You're appealing it every time at this point, Joey.
I'm sorry, well, you should have told me.
Let you conclude.
It's my age and my sight, but when I see you smiling, I know. Recognize you all, you all look good, and that's who I am. John, I hope you do a good job, as John did, he was my bestest friend. Well, you all were. I can't pick out each one of you, but please, please do help us. Elderly people, oh, there it is. I missed it. Elderly people pushing cars, and we can't, nobody's doing anything. So I don't know where I'm going to go with it. I'm going to attorney tomorrow, and they don't want to accept it because they said it's going to cost a lot of money. I don't care, I'll put my farm up for sale. We've got to get rid of it. Thank you.
It's nice to see you, Joanne.
Thank you, nice to see you, Joanne. Randy Lovelace?
Hello?
See all the dog lovers in here, they hate me already.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm here because I'm on the Clearwater Housing Authority list. And to preface before I speak about the issue that I've got, I have lots of people have reached out to help me. Mr. Memes has reached out, Ms. Rodriguez is here today, she's reached out, Ashley Overen, Jacqueline Rivera, who's the CEO, Ms. Doby. But what happened is, I've been on the list for four years. I got a letter in the mail Saturday telling me that apartment was available after four years. I called the number, no one was there, of course, it was Saturday. I called at 8:00 AM Monday, and I was told the apartment was given away two days later after they've written the letter. I asked them, "Well, what's my number on the list?" Clearwater Housing Authority won't tell you what number you are on the list. I said, "I don't think the process is fair." They told me they sent out 10 letters, first person that gets the letter comes in with the money, they get the apartment. The person that got the letter could be number 10 on the list. The person at number one, who would never know that they're number one, may have been waiting longer. I spoke with several people about the process. I don't think the process is fair. I don't think it's transparent. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think it's legal. So I've got several people have looked into this and are still looking into it. I was told the other day that I'm number four on the list. Now, just because I was told I was number four on the list doesn't mean that everybody else is being told what number they are. Again, it's the process. The form letter that you get states, hey, you're nearing the top of the list, the apartment will be available in the near future. I asked someone to find what the near future was, got several different definitions of what the near future is. I was told by the lady that wrote the letter, Ms. Ford at Fairway Gardens, that it was 24 hours or so, that's the near future. Someone else told me a week to a month, depending on how long it takes to fix the apartment, maintain it, in order to lease it out. But the problem lies with the implementation of the Clearwater Housing Authority list. It's not fair, it's not transparent, and again, I don't think it's legal. I got on that list, being, I worked for 15 years at Nielsen TV ratings, got lymphoma cancer, went to VA, got treatments, got on the disabled list there. In 2016, Dunedin sold their property, Fairway Gardens, to Clearwater. At that time, they sent out a letter saying, "Everyone on the list in Dunedin, the list's been terminated." You just have, you know, the list is over. There's no housing. I contacted Bob Ironsmith and the mayor and a few other people and said, "I don't think that's fair, and I'm not sure that's legal." I don't know.
Well, thank you for being here, and I'm glad that you shared your concerns with our county staff, and more importantly, with the Clearwater Housing Authority itself, because we have no purview over the housing authority or control. I would suggest you also try to contact members of their board, and also the city of Clearwater.
I have. I spoke with the Clearwater City Council last week.
You did go to the city council?
I got my three minutes there, and I spoke with someone there. I spoke to the Clearwater City Council Thursday at 6:00 PM at the library. So I got my three minutes in there, and again, I didn't get enough time to speak and say what I had to say. But I wanted to put you on notice that the process isn't fair, it's not transparent, and I don't think it's legal.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Memes. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have a few cards on Bay Point property, and there's not, generally it's five people giving up their time for 10 minutes. There, Kate Lavanch and Jeff Allen would like to give their time to Linda McDowell. I think we'll try to, can you do it in six minutes?
I think I can do it in six, possibly.
Okay. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. My name is Linda McDowell, and I am here today to represent more than 1,000 residents surrounding the Bay Point property. Some of those residents are here today. And we have some serious concerns over neglect and dangerous conditions on the property. We appeared before the board last September. We showed you pictures and described the serious neglect by the current property owners. We discussed the vandalism and health and safety concerns. Many of you were surprised and very concerned about the situation. At that time, Chairman Welch directed the staff to review options and report back in October. At a subsequent commission meeting, when the former county administrator was asked about the results of this review, he indicated that staff was looking at all options, including legal ones such as injunctive relief. Since that time, the property has only deteriorated further, culminating last week in a serious fire. You need to know that it was a very dangerous situation for residents nearby. The flames were propelled by smaller explosions of flammable materials and chemicals stored in a maintenance area. The smoke spread across the property and into the homes of Tamarack residents who are all 55-plus. The Harbor Greens condos sit directly in the middle of this property, and were threatened with flames spreading across the few yards that separate them from the fire.
Linda, can you?
Yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
So we weren't seeing the pictures yet.
Oh, sorry. Firefighters had difficulty accessing the property and getting to the maintenance area, wading through waist-high grass with fire hoses. Had this fire occurred at night and not been addressed quickly, it would have been a catastrophic event. We thank all of the responders for their diligent efforts to contain and extinguish the fire, and now this is what we are looking at in the aftermath. All of this could have likely been avoided. The property owners were issued numerous citations earlier last year, and one of the requirements by the magistrate was to secure the maintenance area and remove the shed. Had it been removed, obviously, there would have been no fire. Or had it been secured with a fence around the maintenance compound, it would have likely served as a deterrent to anyone entering. Had the property owners complied with the special magistrate's ruling last year, the county and its taxpayers would not have incurred the cost of four to six fire trucks from Largo and Seminole, and the manpower to respond to this situation. The property owners' obligation solutions have not paid one dime of property taxes to the county in five years. We are here today to once again call for action, and we request several immediate steps and any other steps that the commission may have been considering but has not acted on yet. First, we request the highest fines possible be placed on the current infractions, which now amount to almost $400,000 in unpaid fines, and that additional infractions on the property be brought to the magistrate for another ruling as quickly as possible. Secondly, we request that the maintenance shed area and building be condemned and torn down, and that the county bill the charges back to the property owner. Third, we request that other buildings that are on-site be secured, particularly the pro shop, broken windows which needed to be boarded up, and the clubhouse. The clubhouse has been broken into, and teenagers and kids are entering through broken windows. The Sheriff's Department has recently been there and indicated there are holes in the roof. The roof is falling down. And fourth, we request that the grass be mowed and debris, especially from Hurricane Irma last year, be removed. The difficulty of firefighters wading through the high grass to get to the maintenance area shows the risk involved in letting the property continue to be neglected. With the dry season coming, it won't take much to start a grass fire, which again, would pose a serious health and safety risk for all the residents surrounding the property. Finally, it is critical that the county look at moving forward on any legal action that can be taken against the property owners to protect the residents and citizens. We have lived with this situation for four years too long. This is not an issue about whether or not we have a golf course, or development on the property. We are not like the other golf courses. Besides many differentiating factors, including size, density, and location, there are at least three residential communities with more than 300 residents either surrounding, abutting, or sitting in the middle of this property. None of the other golf courses are experiencing the neglect, decline, unpaid fines, and immediate health and safety risks. It is not appropriate to associate us with other golf courses. Our property is inherently different and must be addressed as such. We count on you to represent our interests as taxpayers and allow us to live in a healthy and safe environment. The county's goals and core principles are consistent with keeping residential communities safe and thriving. Please do everything in your power now to help rectify this unacceptable situation. We need you to please step in, step up, and don't step out. Thank you. And now, a Tamarack resident, I believe, one of the.
Ken Renaux.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And that is the only other card that I have, okay.
I'm going to be brief, because she covered most of my points already.
I'm sorry. Could you identify yourself, please?
What's that?
It's Ken Renaux, R-E-N-O-U-X, correct? Okay.
I live on 93rd Avenue in Tamarack by the golf, a short distance from the fire that we had last week. I'm also a retired city fire marshal of Nashville, New Hampshire Fire Rescue. The fire building, along with four others, on the site, has been vacant for years. Still vacant and unsecured are the remains of the fire building, the clubhouse, a section of the former cart storage area, and two bathrooms on the golf course. One of my responsibilities as the city fire marshal is enforcing the city's vacant building ordinance. At one time, Nashville, New Hampshire was one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. In the late 80s, the bottom fell out economically, and we had over 100 and closer to 150 vacant buildings in the city. Vacant buildings are a significant fire hazard. They also prevent a hazard to firefighters and the abutters of the properties. They're attractive nuisances for juveniles, has happened recently, and attractive homes for squatters. Many times during enforcement actions, we try and seek voluntary compliance. But what do you do in cases where people won't voluntarily secure the buildings? Back in New Hampshire, the city attorney agreed with me that a vacant structure was essentially an exigent, excuse me, or emergency circumstance. At that point, we would have utilities cut to the structure, go in and board the building, and post a lien on the deed, where we would eventually recover our costs. I would suggest that you do the same here, and I certainly wish you success in resolving this matter, but I see no other way of resolving this except securing the buildings and filing additional liens. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. So, Mr. County Administrator or Ms. County Attorney?
The items that were discussed have been pursued by staff. They've been very aggressive in finding the property and trying to, you know, secure the property and get closure on the issue. However, you have an uncooperative property owner, and that puts it into the county attorney's hands, into the courts, as she stated. They have almost $400,000 in fines. But, and we did mow, like, the front section once, but, you know, you can only do so much, and the property owner's been uncooperative. So we'll continue, and those are great, you know, suggestions. We'll continue to work with the county attorney's office. We'll be aggressive in doing so. Absence that, it's still a private piece of property.
I have a question. Yes. Have they actually not paid taxes in five years?
I don't know the answer. I'm sure it's true.
Yes, they have not.
They haven't paid their fines, so I'm sure they haven't paid their property taxes.
I have a question, Commissioner Madam Chair. Jewel, is this an issue that can go on forever? Is there no finite point where these folks can get relief legally?
Well, certainly legally, anything, anything can go on forever until we take action. It appears with an uncooperative property owner to move forward. It does not appear, from what I'm hearing, that the special magistrate has had the desired result. I'm unaware of other actions that have been taken, but certainly we could move forward with an attempt to increase our efforts, you know, depending on the will of the staff and how to move forward, and really how much the county is willing to invest on some of these cases. It's incumbent upon the county, and we've seen these in the past, where we would actually go in and take a lot of the remedial actions ourselves. There's always a risk there. Sometimes you get repaid, sometimes you don't. So, you know, there's a whole host of options that we can look at going forward, realizing that there are some, you know, potential risks in going forward, but, you know, sometimes you have to weigh whether those are worth moving forward on. And at some point, they generally are.
At this point, it's been five years. Do we have any idea how long we're willing to wait?
Well, the real issue is, we thought we had a resolution to the issue. Okay. And then that changed. And so that, that kind of puts us back to square one, and that's right when the fire happened, so.
Well, I don't see that it's a good faith effort on their part. I mean, surely, there's some legal remedy for that.
And we can certainly work with the county attorney's office and do everything possible, as she stated, to, I mean, we have no law of laws here. You know, they're intentionally disregarding court, you know, orders, fines, and everything else, so we certainly want everything that we can do to be enforced.
Would, do the fines follow, if somebody else came in and bought the property, do the fines follow the property?
Generally, what you see in a real estate closing is encumbrances are going to be dealt with, generally, in a closing. I mean, these are governmental liens. They do survive some actions, but generally not a, an arms-length fair market transaction. You're usually going to see these liens resolved.
Usually will see.
Usually, yes.
Well, what about the tax?
Taxes are always going to get paid. Taxes are always going to get paid right up front.
So it's getting to a point where whoever buys this property is going to have a lot of money right off the top to the county?
Sure.
So at what point do we just take it?
And we would want to look into it. I mean, when there are that many. When there are that many tax certificates, if there truly are five years of unpaid taxes, and I'm not saying there are, I just don't know, I'd be surprised to find that out, just simply because you can apply for a tax deed after, I believe, three years, somebody who holds a certificate. So I'd be a little.
I think, I think it would be very wise, Jewel, if you could talk to Mike Twitty and find out the history here, because we absolutely know that they have not paid those taxes in five years.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Working with staff.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I think that is a great point. That was my thought as well. The second thought was, it seems like, along the ways, whether property owners owned the property, or it was in receivership, or different points along the way, that there were some avenues available to us in an emergency situation. And clearly, I mean, whether we anticipated it or not, the fact that there was a fire to a property raises to that level. Could you please let us know what avenues we have to take some action on some of that, some of that situation that is creating this emergency? I consider emergency, and I'm sure we do. I'd like to know what they are, and let's act, or give us an opportunity to respond and give some direction.
And I ask, I actually asked Blake to come back. He had went back to his office. I asked him to come back because the residents wanted to meet in between this meeting and our public hearing, and that, so I asked Blake to come back, so we can kind of walk through the steps that we can do, and we'll have the county attorney available, so we can look at our legal options to secure the property.
Well, I mean, it's, first to me, it's, it is a dangerous situation at this point. And we, going back, and I think Commissioner Welch will remember this, but during the recession, and we had foreclosures, and we had dangerous situations, we actually set up a fund to be able to, and to be able to take down some of the buildings. So I'd like to see if that's, if this can follow the property, then I'd like to go ahead and take care of getting this done and demolished, so it is a safer situation.
Thank you.
And then put it as an attachment to the property.
But I'd like us to be as aggressive as possible. I mean, enough already. I agree.
God, they're just giving up.
Mr. Welch?
I think she put it very poetically, enough already. But I think that one you mentioned was in Lowman, where there actually was a fire or something like that. So I think that's a great idea.
We actually funded it, so that we just figured if it was a dangerous situation, we needed to. And also passed an ordinance that gave us the ability to do that on a private property. Commissioner Peter?
And that's all great, and I agree, and it's well said. But when you say, go in and do something, it's got to be more than taking down just the burnt structure, because you have two other structures that are also potential dangers. So I know staff will do a good job at looking at it, but well said. Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you for being here today, and we're sorry for what you're going through, and I, we'll do our very best to see if we can get some movement in some direction in that regard, so. Okay, Lenore Faulkner, and then David Ballard Geddes, and then Greg Pound.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioner Seal and your distinguished commission. Thank you for your service. I'm Lenore Faulkner from Madera Beach, speaking for all the children left behind in Pinellas County. Your school system advertises 100% success. However, you know that they've won the Pulitzer Prize for the failure factory stories in five poor St. Petersburg elementary schools. The school system replaced their experienced teachers with new, cheaper, inexperienced people. When the Secretary of Education comes down from Washington, DC, you know you have a problem. The school system closed Southside Fundamental, a successful A-rated school. Johns Hopkins is not a positive word in St. Petersburg, especially for the middle school. Our students need to know that they are valued. They are not a piece of data in an ever-changing puzzle. Every child in Pinellas needs empathy and compassion from their county commissioners. This will take place in form of integrity, firm adherence to moral values, courage, strength to do what is right regardless of consequences, enthusiasm, passion for the life of these students, faith, belief, and trust in God, and hope of expectations of success. Love is selfless concern for others, especially our poor students. Caring for the poor is not just a moral duty, but part of the common good. When you took your oath of office, you took it for every student in Pinellas County. It's your responsibility. I just want to speak about two things. I go to Tampa five days a week. My son's been a patient there for 20 years, and I was in the polytrauma family support group for 15 years. I was the first responder to all the bedrooms as they arrived from Iraq and Afghanistan. And I am mentoring a TBI patient. He worked for FEMA and a gate bell on his head. I talked to him every day. He asked me if, what I thought about graduate school. I said, if you can get in, let's go for it. He's at Palm Beach Atlantic. I talked to him for an hour, an hour and a half every day. He has one more course. He has a 3.95 grade point average. Kevin Kale, my best friend's son, had cancer at Dunedin High. Everyone in the band shaved their head. He died in 1997, so thank you for your service.
David Ballard Geddes, Jr.?
Hi, good afternoon, David Ballard Geddes, Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Chapter 373 of the Florida State statutes is based on the Resource Act of 1972, which henpecked, again, or cherry-pecked, the code, not as though I think much of Maloney's Water Code. I believe Maloney's Water Code is an act of piracy, as is Hamilton's First Constitution, based on the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. The mere fact that we have water complications today is deliberate, stemming from the first sentence sailed by Hamilton in Federalist Paper Number One. But to argue, when developers came to Pinellas County in the early 1970s, they equipped every household with a sprinkler system as deed, deed requirements coupled with the wide-scale overuse of pesticides and fertilizers, the desecration of our Cypress wetlands used for Cypress mulch, then today legislating, legislation copulating its navigation with ad hoc reclaimed water availability fees in support of third-party, private political undertakings, and formulating variances against civilian homeownership, allowing third parties to levy the equity out of our homes to fund deliberately neglected, legislatively neglected, infrastructure. The reclaimed water availability fee, the variance application, and the eminent domain rights found in Statute 15303, Section 5, are capricious and are built up on false findings and misrepresentation of facts. According to Statute 9511, these findings and facts are based on legislative concealment and actions of government based on fraud involving latent defects of legislation, again, found in Statute 9511. Legislation needs to be held accountable for longstanding misuse of their powers, and thank you again. It's good to see you.
Greg Pound?
Greg Pound, Pinellas County, Largo, Florida. Listen, Proverbs, Chapter 23, today, the 23rd, I read a proverb every day. It says, in verse 23, it says, "Buy the truth and sell it not." And so what happens is, we're now in a system that has sold the truth out for money. This country now has put money before truth, and it's destroying us. Now, just in our county, where we have, like, Ken Welch, Karen Seals, been here 20 years, and just because that we voted and it wasn't put in the charter, that now it doesn't matter. Okay, now, come on. Listen, you got Jim Coates' lawyer of 11 years protecting with the corruption that's going on in this county. This is Child Abuse Month, April. I've got enough articles, you've got the blood of innocent children on your hands in this county for over 15 years I've been coming here. I bring, you want to see them? You want to look at them? I've got a stack of them, children that are dead, that have been dead in this county. People would rather throw their children over the bridge than have the county government get a hold of their children. That's how bad it is in Pinellas County government. And to think that I get this in the mail with Karen, Karen Seals' picture on it, when county employees come to me, who've worked here for 18 years, exposes the fraud, racketeering, and corruption in order to get money to get elected, and working deals, road deals with people, this is, it's just out of control. And so what I'm saying is, we're bringing ourselves under judgment. Now, we have a major problem in this country. You get a chance, just Google this and look this up. Look what's going on in this country, okay? Because of the destruction of our families, the court is anti-family, they use the women to pitch against the men, destroy the families, separate the children from their fathers. Look at the generation of children you're dealing with. You've got so many dysfunctional people now today in our society, it's unbelievable. You got, you got this criminal prosecutor in our county, Bernie McCabe, who should be in prison, in prison for what he's done to people, and allowing his prosecutors to do what they've done to people. Putting everyone on drugs, then charging for drug crimes, all the courts and the doctors have made millions, millions, even billions of dollars. So we've got a massive problem. When your sheriff in this county goes up to Tallahassee, gets into Judiciary Committee, the first words that come out of his mouth, on 2/1919, at the judiciary meeting, he says, "I'm the sheriff of Pinellas County, and I'm also an attorney." Right there, the guy went to law school, he's to be charged for violating the law, breaking the law. Okay, so what it is, is we've got an organized, we've got organized corruption running Pinellas County. You people have been grandfathered into the system, you're here, and you're, we can't get you out, we can't vote you out, we can't even get what we vote on in the charter to get you out. So what else can we do? What are we supposed to do as people? And while you're just, the system is in big trouble, so you look at this other website, What's Headed for America, okay? You destroy the rule of law, and it's going to be replaced by another law. It's called Sharia law, to your own destruction, like it's happening in Europe, France, Germany, and other places, because they use their money to pay off our politicians, and you people will do anything for money.
Agenda item 34.
Agenda item 34 is a resolution clarifying the delegated authority for the Human Resources Director to act as the plan administrator for the Board of Commissioners-sponsored Employee Health Benefits Plan.
Move approval, second. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. Sorry.
I'm a yes as well. Okay.
Okay. So Commissioner Welch, you are.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous approval then. Agenda item 35?
That's a reappointment to the local planning agency, approval of a reappointment of Valerie Hibbard as an alternate member of the local planning agency.
Move approval, second. Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Valerie. Next is Commission, County Commission, new business items, I believe, Commissioner Gerard?
Oh. Forgot to bring it with me. It's not in here, right? Oh. It's not in here. Yeah, I don't, it didn't make it onto the agenda.
This is for the Seminole?
Yeah.
Seminole, MSNU funding proposal?
That's why I wasn't ready, because it wasn't supposed to come up today.
Do you all want to, is it time-sensitive, or can it go on?
Um, no.
We were going to discuss it on Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, then, I'll, anybody else have any new business? All right, then we'll move in on to the County Commission Board Report's miscellaneous items, and I will start with Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Long always gets on me about not sharing info that you might not have, but you might have it already. There's a little notes icon on the bottom that'll show you all your notes at one time.
What?
On iLegislate, there's a notes. On iLegislate, there's a notes.
I know, but it's, oh, look at that.
So, I found that helpful today. I just thought I'd share that, because you can see everything at one time.
Thank you.
Because I've got a few and I'll work through them quickly. BTS, Business Technology Services Board met last week. We approved our FY '20, if you can believe that. We're talking 2020 already. Budget submission, including two decision packages that'll be coming forward. One of the things we talked about was, I think, I don't know if Bill's here, we've got, I think it's about $2.3 million a year in Oracle license fees and support fees that we pay, and that all at the support of the OPUS system, which is our main system for the county. But OBAC, the Advisory Panel, which I think, Claritha, you're on OBAC, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
That's OPUS, they told us what the acronym was.
Oracle Business Applications Executive Committee.
Okay, you're on that and Bill Berger and some other folks are going to make a recommendation to us on what our strategy should be going forward. Do we continue to pay that, you know, high support fee with Oracle, or do we move in a different direction and a different support model? So, that's going to be important for us going forward. Next item is Census 2020. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the appointment to chair the Complete Count Committee. We had a presentation from Bernadine King from the Census Bureau late last year. We talked about the importance of the census and how our response rate last census was only 76% in this county. That impacts everything from our congressional representation to our funding for housing and education and other important issues. Our staff has done a great job. Want to thank Renee Vincent, Josh Boatright from Communications has done a great job, Corey Gray and Maia Darlena Herring. We're putting together the first meeting for May 17th. We've reached out to some folks to chair different committees, including a Business Committee, a Neighborhoods Committee, elected officials, public information officers from the municipalities. We want to reach out to youth and seniors as well, and also a civic and multicultural organization, just to try to make sure at the end of the day, everyone understands how the census will work. It'll be different this year. It's going to be mainly on computer and then you can participate via mail or phone or in person, but their primary means will be computers. And some folks might not be comfortable with that. And so, it's all about communication and education.
So, Commissioner Welch, I have a question.
I knew you would.
Is it possible to put this information in with our utility bills that go out to everyone?
We're open to all ideas. I don't know if Communications had looked at it already, but the PIA committee is going to, and that's all the PIOs from the municipalities and the county as well.
And then my second question is, what happens for those people who don't have access to a computer? I know it's hard to believe, but there's a whole piece of our society that doesn't have access to computers.
Absolutely.
And even if they did, they'd be hard-pressed to figure out how to use them.
Yeah.
So, what are we doing for them?
Well, again, we haven't had our first meeting yet.
Okay, well, just put those questions down so you can come back and tell us.
An issue that we've already talked about, because there is a map of the underrepresented areas, and it wouldn't surprise you to know that it basically reflects our five areas that are impacted by poverty.
Still, it's the same, still five?
Yeah, well, it correlates. The areas that have been unrepresented or underrepresented in past censuses also are our five areas of poverty. And so, we know the digital divide, folks don't have access to computers. If they do, they might not have Internet access. And so, all those are areas that we are going to try to communicate people, okay? If you can't participate via computer, here are the ways that you can participate, that everyone who is in this county should be counted regardless of your status. So, all those things are things that we're going to try to make sure that we communicate folks, make sure they're comfortable.
Good.
And it's going to be a community-wide effort.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
We'll give you updates periodically as we move through the process.
Good.
Was able to celebrate Earth Day yesterday at Bartlett Park. Commissioner Long came down and Commissioner Justice was a little bit under the weather. But it just, you know, for me, was an opportunity to reflect on the leadership of this commission going back decades on environmental issues, the environmental lands that we set aside. Bow to Jake. Through the penny for Pinellas, we funded that. And I was trying to get the number, we used to say 23% of the land in the county had been set aside for parks and preserves. I was trying to get the number yesterday. They did get me, thank you, Della, 20,000 acres, but I still want to get to that percentage. And it's impressive what we've been able to set aside in the most densely populated county in the state of Florida. But I think about your work on the fertilizer ordinance, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Seals' work on the sea level rise compact, it's ongoing and very impressive and important. And then Commissioner Justice's work on Tampa Bay Estuary, the Gulf Consortium.
Thank you.
On the Stormwater Sewer Task Force. It's just a real good track record to the county and our cities, what they've been able to do in terms of making sure environmental stewardship is something we pass on for generations to come. So, I just wanted to say that, that's a feel-good issue, but I just wanted to say it because we've done a terrific job here. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. That was a nice summary, and I hope you took time to sit or at least reflect under a tree.
I did, and there's a story there. I'll tell it later. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Tampa Bay Water chose to table the MOU for a year till the feasibility study comes, which I think was wise, in that it allows us to get answers to some questions that they can't give us until their study is complete. I'm sure Commissioner Eggers may elaborate a little bit more, but I think it was a good, I think it was a smart move. So, and it did pass unanimous to table it for a year. Other than that, I've spent the last several weeks going to Sarasota, Orange County, Hillsborough County, touring the central receiving facilities or marchment facilities that those counties have. And I'm pleased to announce that 10 marchment beds at the domiciliary are moving forward and should be operational by July 1st. I also took a tour up there. There's, the staff are working with acts to secure, they're going to have to put in locks and cameras and fences and stuff, and so the staff is working with them, and I'm sure that they're doing it in a timely way. So, I want to thank the staff that they're moving that along and doing a really, really good job. And with that comes, there's a lot more that comes with it, it's not just 10 beds. So, we have a meeting with the sheriff this week. Because we don't have a central receiving facility, we still have to determine how we receive them, assess them, and determine before they get moved. So, it's not just getting 10 beds, it's pretty more, it's a lot more complicated in how you transport up. There was concern at one point about whether North County was the appropriate place to, that far north, to have people, but when you look at the transport data, some of our highest responses for suspected overdose, the four highest locations in the county are Eastlake, Safety Harbor, Dunedin, and Terre Verdi. And so, using the domiciliary is not, not that it's too far away or any notion that somebody would think that was just too far out there. It's not. It's just making sure that we have an appropriate system in which to bring them and receive them, assess, and then transport out. So, the sheriff will be intricately involved at this point, because he's currently our receiving center for any marchment that we have. So, I'll be updating you more on that as it comes. Thank you.
Eastlake, Safety Harbor, Terre Verdi, and what was that?
Dunedin.
Dunedin, okay. Thank you. Interesting. Okay, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not too much on board reports. I have in the next couple of weeks, all of them, the meetings coming up, including a reminder, May 23rd at 9:00 at SFC Seminole will be a presentation and update from our technical staff for the Stormwater-Wastewater Task Force. So, we'll have an update on where we are with our progress and the INI studies and those kind of things. Everything else is coming up, Gulf Consortium in June in Orlando, and I think that's pretty much for the boards. Wanted to thank everyone who participated. April 12th, we did our farm share, and Whitney and Courtney did an outstanding job coordinating everything, and we had a ton of volunteers from staff. But if you want to know the numbers, we had 31 volunteers, plus we had support from the Largo Police Department and the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department. We had 16,645 pounds of food distributed to 475 households, which included 1,000 adults and nearly 400 children. So, a lot of hard work, a lot of sweat labor, but a lot of good done that day. And as a, to continue the theme, Mayor Penny from South Pasadena put out an all-call. City Hall in Pasadena is a collection site for the Cereal for Summer Program for Feeding Tampa Bay. And if you want to bring a donation to the office, Courtney and I will get it down to Pasadena. If you get it to us by May 7th, it'll be in their massive collection for that. And that's it.
Okay, great. Mr. Gerard.
Yeah, just wanted to mention, I talked to somebody the other day that was interested in having a farm share in North County, and now I can't remember who it was. Because there were people up there that needed to. And if you haven't done one, you should, it's really fun, except for the breaking those yuckos. Anyway, I went, I went to a meeting in Greater Ridgecrest last week or week before, and it was all about annexation, because somehow they had heard that the city of Largo was going to involuntarily annex the entire neighborhood of Ridgecrest, and...
Are you?
Am I?
Are you?
You know what I mean. The mayor of Largo was there, and so was I. And so, we, he assured them that they did not intend to involuntarily annex them, and I assured them that we had no intention of letting them go. So, it was an interesting meeting, not a single person in the room wanted to annex into City of Largo. I had, I have to say, I had really mixed feelings about that.
Great story.
I mean, come on. Not that I was trying to convince them. Went to, did opening remarks at a national sustainability conference the other day, which is part of National Cooperative Extensions, whatever that, which is part of the Department of Agriculture. So, that was interesting. They're all about sea level rise and sustainability, and so that was, that was interesting. We have a board meeting, Career Source, next week, where we're going to take a look at the letter of intent from the city of St. Petersburg to purchase the science center at the best price. I mean, they apparently really want it.
For what?
Three quarters.
No, I mean, what do they want to do with it?
They want to, they're, they have a wastewater treatment plant that backs up to it, to the back of the property, so they're going to use some of it for that and the rest of it for affordable housing.
Well, that's a great idea.
Which they really need to get to work on, right? Youth Advisory Committee met at the medical examiner's office, and I got a person to scare the heck out of them about ever taking any drugs they got from somebody they don't know. We didn't get to look at the autopsy room.
Or ever.
Or ever, well, you know, try to be realistic. But yeah, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Peters for taking Youth Arts Corps, or Youth Advisory Committee on for the remainder of the year, for starting next year.
You're here.
Whitney would be thrilled to help you. And they're fun. They really are. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Well, thank you. I guess did have a couple of committees this past couple of weeks. So, just for Pinellas, I got a nice summary sheet, which I will send to you all again, I think, well, there's four of us on there, so three of you will get it for the first time. But we talked a lot about the Advantage Pinellas Plan, we talked about constrained roads, we talked about policy-constrained roads, non-constrained roads, and there was a lot of conversation about Eastlake, the Gateway area. So, we're really starting to put the finishing touches on the Advantage Pinellas Plan. It's the long-term plan for, I guess, the next 25 years. So, that's supposed to be finished by the end of this year. Talked a little bit about a letter that we were sending to our legislative delegation on preserving the Housing Trust Fund, investing in infrastructure that we already have a lot of needs for, instead of the three new roads out in the wilderness that people really don't want. Talked about reconciling the House and Senate bills on distracted driving, asked that we continue to maintain control over the scooter-sharing services, that there seems to be a lot of conversation going about that. And then concurred with having local referendums on the general election year, but suggested they not be overly restrictive and require the two-thirds majority vote. So, there was a lot of thought put into that, so that letter went out to our legislative delegation. We talked a little bit about Skinner Boulevard in Dunedin, the Complete Streets Program, some issue of backups at Honeymoon Island, and some of the new things that they're doing out there to try to alleviate the traffic during, certainly getting out to the beaches that back up all the way to Curlew. So, a couple of extra lanes is what they're talking about. FDOT, been looking at some interchange auctions north of Tampa Road, and we were given the Bicycle, Florida Bicycle Association Award for the Year for Best Supporting Agency. So, lots going on at Forward Pinellas, and I will get this out to you. If you have any questions, holler at Whit, if you need to talk to him about anything related to that. Let's see, MYVA, which is a Community Veteran Engagement Board, the board continues to grow. Brett Miller has been, is just doing a great job at chairing that group, and we're getting, we're probably up to 20 members now and really reaching out into the community, including hospitals and such, to be members of that, and how we better provide feedback and service to our veterans. It's been, it's really a good group, and one of these days, we'll have them in here just to give us a report on what they're doing, but I think everybody would be interested in that. Eugenia Simmons, who is our head of the cemetery down there, talks about Memorial Day Ceremony, May 29th, 10 o'clock, excuse me. So, please, if you're down that way, please take your kids and get a chance to see that. Resource Guide is, continues to be used. We're talking to a group called the Yellow Ribbon Network that will be doing some things online. It might be usurping some of the things that our Resource Guide does, but I still think there's going to be a role for that, so that's a work in progress, and so we'll, we'll see how that unfolds. Continue to be very appreciative to the county for their, for our use, our printing up the, those guides from time to time. And really, that's all I wanted to say about the Veterans Engagement Board, that just a really good group that's doing good stuff. I think Kathleen touched on the Tampa Bay Water. There was three, actually three, I guess, motions that we took. One was to defer the TAP MOU vote until June of 2020. There's just so much, so much work that needs to be done before, and it was, it really was the cart before the horse, and the city of Tampa Council hasn't even endorsed the project, because they have a lot of questions, too. I was concerned really that by our approving it now, we would be kind of putting a seal of approval on it, and that concerned me, given the fact that there's plenty of water, you don't need to go down that road, and certainly the residents in this community in this greater area don't, don't seem to think that either. So, there's a lot of work to do, they've got a year to do that, we're going to come back in a year. The second motion that was put in, that was also, which I wasn't quite sure I got the second part of that first motion, but if this, we incurred, we're encouraging the state to come up with half the cost that Tampa Bay, Tampa, needs for their project over the next year, and hopefully they will do that. If they don't do that, then we'll be the backup. So, I thought, well, that was probably not a good vote to take while session was still going. We should have let that play out first and then come back later, but nonetheless, I guess we'll be the backup to legislature and SWIFTMUD. In any event, we wanted them to understand that we were supportive of their efforts in general, but certainly not necessarily of the project yet. The second motion was that we ask the Tampa Bay Water staff to produce a summary of all the staff time and attorney billing records related to TAP, because we have been spending probably almost two years talking about this. So, and then I asked, for a third motion, that our staff and legal counsel continue to investigate the validity of the MOU as it relates to giving up water production rights. Tampa Bay Water isn't even, isn't even a member to the inter-local agreement, and that's probably where it needs to be, but so we're going to continue working with that parallel to the process that we're going to be undergoing. Kind of a wait-and-see, but there's some other work that we can do in the meantime. So, it was, it was a good meeting, probably a good place to be. So, it was, it was a good meeting, probably a good place to be. Still philosophically have concerns with, with what's going on, but in any event. And then just on some, just some, I guess, some other things away from the committees, North County had their Relay for Life on April 12th, it was really good, it was supposed to be for most of the northern cities, had a good, a great turnout. The Palm Harbor Spring Fling, which was the Alyssa Nelson Foundation fundraiser for Alyssa Nelson, and it had over a thousand participants, not a thousand runners, but between volunteers and groups, and it was really a great turnout, and I really did finish without stopping, so I didn't embarrass you, which was good. I ran right alongside the, Mr. Greg, Dr. Greg O from school, so we huffed and puffed and encouraged each other along, but it was a really nice day and a really good, a good, good thing. Let's see. Last night, it spoke at the Ovis and inducted the new officers, and then the Clearwater Autobahn showed up with a presentation, had three birds of prey that they brought and showed, and it was just, it was wonderful, and was so glad not to follow them, because, you know, when you talk about county government, as excited as we get about it, it, it doesn't grab your attention, quite like the talons of those birds, but that was pretty cool. So, anyway, good stuff going on there, a lot of good, strong partnerships with the city of Clearwater. And this morning, we had a groundbreaking at the Dunedin Stadium for the, for the new facilities down there. I, I'm guessing between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five people showed up, it was a great turnout, a lot of, a lot of emotion, a lot of people really very intimately involved in that process, so it was, it was...
Didn't even know about it.
You didn't?
No.
Oh. You didn't know about it either?
Sure.
So, I thought everybody knew about it.
I want our money back.
Well, certainly, certainly, you know, Commissioner Seal was there and I was there, I'm sorry that you guys didn't get invitations.
I received one.
Okay, you did, okay. So, you know, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
Yeah. We'll, we'll check into that to make sure you're getting the invitations, but you should have. Really wanted to thank the efforts put together for the staff lunch, staff picnic tomorrow, and really, it was great to give them the recognition that our staff deserves, and so, happy, happy Staff Day tomorrow and throughout the year, they do great work for us, and also wanted to congratulate Zephry and Jill, good to have you onboard. I've been a big fan of yours for years, and it's good to be working, gonna be working with you in a, in a month or so, so that was great. And just one final comment, Commissioner Welch was commenting on the fact that, at the, at the briefing, that he and Commissioner Justice spoke, and even knowing what that meant, still hit me funny that we were having a discussion, you two commissioners were talking at a briefing, so I just wanted to remind everybody that we now have a new procedure in place, and that is that the, we don't do individual briefings anymore for commission meetings, that they occur the Thursday before a commission meeting, and we do it together. So we kind of go through that, where we were doing it individually before, it saves a lot of time on staff and our county administrator, but it also, I think, is an efficient way to, to deal with that, but also other issues that we might want to talk about. So if you want to see what we're talking about in ahead, in a, ahead of time, please come to that meeting, it's usually Thursday at some point, it's on the website, every, yeah. So, in any event, that was all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to extend another hearty congratulations to Commissioner Justice for becoming the Chair of the Tampa Bay Estuary. It's just a nice testament to your leadership, Charlie, on, on that issue and its importance, so thank you. I want to remind everyone that the FACT Annual Conference is from July 11th to June 14th in Orlando, and the NACO Annual Conference is July 12th.
What are the dates?
July. June. June 11th in Orlando.
It said July.
I'm sorry, I'm reading.
I know.
It's from June 11th to the Fort, no, I, it does, it's not Ju, it's June.
It's June, okay.
Stop confusing me.
All right.
Okay. The NACO Annual Conference is in July, July 12th through the 15th in Las Vegas. I want to remind you that a couple months ago, I spoke to you about the fact that I have been being encouraged at FACT to put my name in the hat for the executive committee and moving on up to President of FACT, and so, with that said, I will be asking respectfully our Chair to submit a letter that it is okay with all of you, hopefully you still feel that way. I just completed my last class of the AAC certification, and I'm pretty proud of that, and I think you might, some of you might be interested in knowing that John Street Matter was the facilitator. It was one of the best ones that I've ever gone to, and you know, we have to go up to Gainesville for that at the university, because the topic was moving the dial and the steps that you need to go through in a community to move people in the direction that you're trying to encourage them to go. And so, for the issues of climate change and sea level rise that I've been working on, that was very, it just meant a lot to me, because it, it made everything so really clear about how important it is to take those steps. And for those of us, and there are quite a few of us here that serve on the transportation boards for our, not only our county, but our region, I'd, I'd appreciate it if you would take a look at the PowerPoint presentation that we went through, I think it could be very informative for all of us as we start those conversations, so I'll have Doyle share it with you, if you don't mind. Yes, I was at the Earth Day Press Conference yesterday, and it was just a lovely, lovely event, and I, it took me a while to find out where it was, because it was kind of in the back of that, that little facility there at Bartlett Park, but it was just a gorgeous Chamber of Commerce Day, not a cloud in the sky, and it just really made you appreciate the fact that this is a beautiful planet we live on, and we have a responsibility to protect it. The first summit for the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Compact Coalition will be in late, in the late fall this year, so I'll be bringing you additional information as we begin to work on the plans to put that together. So, some of you may remember when Congressman Crist was our governor, and he had put the very first climate summit of that kind together, and it was down in Miami. Now we're gonna do one up here, and hopefully it'll be the greatest and the best one in the whole entire state. And I think it's telling to learn that our compact that we put together last year is one of only eighteen regions in the entire United States that has come together in a regional way like we have. So the spotlight is really on our region, just because we are the most vulnerable area in the entire country for these issues, and so, please stay tuned, because it's turning out to be very exciting. Today, I, before I came here, I was at the Largo Medical Board of Trustees, and I have to tell you, it was the best board meeting that we have had since I've been on that board. The new CEO, this was his very first meeting today, is awesome. And he hails from Las Vegas, but before he went there, he was in our region already at another hospital, and so I'm looking forward to really great things from Largo Med under his leadership, and I'd like to share just a few of the things that they're gonna be focusing on this year. So, in particular, they are focusing on the issue of sepsis in hospitals. You know that so many folks go into a hospital and they don't have it, but then they get it while they're in there, and they're really gonna focus this year on the things that they can do to identify it immediately, to know whether or not the patient comes there with it, or develops it after they get there, and I just thought that was a really interesting thing to learn about. The other new thing that they are, they're just on the cusp of so many new and innovative things, it's fascinating to learn about. There is a new thing, it's a device, it's called a VAD. VAD stands for Ventricular Assist Device, and it works just like a heart. So for those folks that have a heart problem, or they're not a candidate for a replacement heart, this'll take the place of a lot of what your heart does, and it was fascinating to hear them describe how it works, and the different kinds of things that it could address. And it works just like a real-life mechanical heart, so look for more information on that to come. They also are in the process of finishing their $10 million, 26-bed expansion, which is going to be the most ultra-modern unit around, I'm looking forward to seeing that. And I also think it would be lovely to invite him to come here, Madam Chair, if you would, might be amenable to that, and let him share with us his vision for the hospital in our community, and he's going to be much more community-minded than our previous leadership, so I just thought it would be a really nice thing. We've had some of the other CEOs from the hospital come and present to us, and they, do they, they have a new CEO yet at Bayfront, Commissioner Welch, I've kind of lost track, because John is gone now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just got a new one.
Northside has a new lady, and I'm not sure about Bayfront.
I'm not sure.
I, yeah. So, anyway, that is the end of my report for today, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, I think you all have covered some of the subjects that I was going to cover, so I just want to mention that we had Unite Pinellas, a great presentation and meeting this week, and Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Justice were there. There are a lot of takeaways from that, that I will try to see if it's things that we are able to work on, but we were able to give a shout-out to Commissioner Welch, and Commissioner Justice, and this commission for the SBE program, for the Affordable Housing Initiatives, and some other things that we have worked on. I thought it was actually pretty amazing, because they talked about, well, I'll mention that another day, but they talked about another area that had been invested a lot in affordable housing, but the number of units that they produced for the $80 million that they invested was nothing compared to what we've done with about $20 million. I think they produced like eight-hundred-and-eighty units, we produced like almost 2,400, 20 million, 2,400, 80 million, 880 units, so...
There's something wrong with that picture.
Yeah, right. It, I think that it's because we have the Housing Finance Authority and other entities that are really leveraging the monies, and so, anyway. It was very, very fascinating and daunting what we, and Mr. Burton was there as well, and Lourdes was there, and Daisy, and I'm probably missing somebody else who was there as well, but I think we have some heavy lifting and hard work ahead of us. So, with that, I also noted, it is Administrative Professional Day tomorrow, and I am forever grateful that Cindy Simmons has been my assistant for 20 years, and thank her for all of her hard work and diligence, and I know you all, all appreciate your assistance as well, and with...
One question, one more thing, if you don't, oh, did you have something to?
I do.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay, I forgot to share that tomorrow, I know it's our employee picnic, but we have our PSTA board meeting tomorrow, so we're gonna be really late, and our T-BARDA board meeting, because we didn't have one last month, is gonna be this Friday.
Right.
Over in Tampa.
Tampa.
So, and to the Unite event. Next time they do something like that, it would be really good if they could do it where there was more parking, because I tried to go, and the closest I could get to it was a mile away. So I was in heels, I was all dressed up to come to the courthouse later, I thought, I'm, I'm not walking a mile to get there.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely parking challenged.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, on a, on a, on a very light note, but very important note, I wanted to wish my wife a happy anniversary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I almost forgot that, of all the things I babbled on about, there's a little note over there that said, "Happy anniversary, happy anniversary, sweetie," it's not today, but it's real, it was last, it was last Friday, ah, yeah, but anyway, wonderful 15 years, thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned until we start back up at 6:00. Thank you.